The item vocation will be led by Commissioner Erickson and the pledge will be led by Commissioner Stafford. Please join us.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, everybody, for attending and all those folks at home, thank you. May we bow our heads and take a moment of collective thought. As we gather here tonight as members of the commission, we pray that we stay ever mindful of the opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens, to our community. We humbly pray for the guidance to make confident decisions, embracing positive changes that will enhance the quality of life for those who live, work, and play in our city, now and for future generations. We are grateful for those who have paved the path before us and strive to continue to make Hot Springs, Arkansas, the best it can be. In closing, let us all wish health and wellness to all of our neighbors. May we all be blessed. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Planning Commission meeting, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, is now called to order. We encourage you to wear your mask while indoors and observe the six-foot social distancing. When your name is called, please come to the podium. Address your comments to the Planning Commission, not to the audience. Any questions you will be answered, any questions you will be answered once everyone who has signed up has spoken. We understand that you may have strong feelings, one way or another. Out of courtesy, unless it's your turn to speak, please remain silent. Please refrain from applauding, cheering, booing, or other verbal outbreaks. This is a fact-finding hearing. There's no need to repeat what has already been said. If a previous speaker stated the opinion, the points in which you wish to make, you simply acknowledge that so that the hearing may proceed. The applicant will have five minutes to speak. Other speakers each will have three minutes. Please respect the time limit. If you intend to speak, please sign up at the table in the back of the room. Names will be called in order of the sign-up sheet. Mr. Starter? Do we have anybody signed up?
Nobody was signed up on any of the sheets.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Starter, please call the roll.
Rayme? Janet? Erickson?
Here.
Stafford?
Present.
Baker?
Here.
Gerke?
Here.
Greenway?
Present.
White? Walker?
Here.
Hobby?
Present. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve of last month's minutes?
So moved.
Second. A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. May I have a motion to approve of tonight's agenda?
My motion?
We had two sets of minutes. We had the November fourth minutes and we had the December ninth minutes. Kathy, does that need to be done by two separate actions?
Uh, yes, it probably should.
So was that motion and second and approval for the last month, which would have been the December ninth? So do we need a motion and second and a vote on the November the fourth?
Yes.
Okay.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes from November fourth?
My motion.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Sorry, I, okay, sorry, that second one wasn't on my script, so it kind of threw me off. So to for the November fourth minutes, all those in favor, or I'm sorry. Can I get a motion to approve?
Yeah, we got a motion.
Okay.
I got a second.
Thank you.
We got a vote.
We just need a vote.
May I? Mr. Starter, please call the roll.
Okay, this is on the approval of the November fourth, two thousand and twenty-one minutes. Uh, Erickson?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Baker?
Approved.
Gerke?
Approved.
Greenway?
Approved.
Walker?
Approved.
Hobby?
Approve.
Thank you.
May I have a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda is now approved.
We need to approve last month's minutes, too, I think.
That, we did that one first and then we did the November one, second, and that threw me off. I apologize. The first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. Items placed in this section are applications which demonstrate compliance with all city applicable city requirements. These items shall not involve discussion by the Planning Commission and/or the public. The consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. However, if any two commissioners so desire, individual items may be discussed and/or voted upon in a separate matter of business. May I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda with staff findings and recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Director Selman, will you read the items on the consent agenda?
Thank you. Um, item number one is a request to extend the preliminary plat and development approval to complete infrastructure for the Waymaker Way Luxury Garden Home subdivision as required by Hot Springs Code sixteen four forty-two. Uh, the finding is that the request was submitted on or prior to the date of default, which is December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, site inspection was conducted and pictures taken of the current condition and progress of the infrastructure. There are no changes in the plat design or neighborhood that would warrant a complete review. Many of the required improvements are complete or are nearing completion. Um, the recommendation is to extend. Uh, item number two is a request from the Hayes Family Limited Partnership for preliminary subdivision plat and development plan approval for new sub, commercial subdivision to be known as Williams Row Commercial Subdivision. It's located generally southeast of Higden Ferry Road and Twin Points Road at approximately eighteen seventy-one Higden Ferry Road. The recommendation and findings are, the findings that all submission requirements for preliminary flats and associated development plans have been met. And, uh, there are conditions. I will read those. Revisions to the draft bill of assurance are necessary to address the street being private and maintenance thereof. The bill of assurance revision and final plat when submitted shall also state the streets within the subdivision are private and not under the care and custody of the city or county and will therefore not be maintained by the city or county. Conditions, uh, of approval will address these specifically. The conditions are sixteen in number and they are as follows. Number one, all construction and construction activities are to be accomplished in strict accordance with the approved preliminary plat and site development improvement development plans. These conditions of approval and all applicable technical codes and specifications, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number two, the draft subdivision bill of assurance shall state the streets within the subdivision are private, not under the care or custody of the city or county, and will therefore not be maintained by the city or county. Number three, the final subdivision bill of assurance shall, uh, state exactly what number two said. Uh, number four, the final subdivision bill of assurance shall be provided to and approved by the planning department prior to execution of the subdivision final plat. A copy of the recorded bill of assurance shall be returned to the planning department after recordation. Number five, full and continuous compliance with all applicable stormwater permitting and water quality regulations, including a retention and detention plan if required. Number six, the preliminary plat signature block for the Hot Springs Planning Director shall be corrected to read certificate of preliminary plat approval. Number seven, the final plat shall include a statement that the streets within the subdivision are private. Number eight, initiate the street naming procedure for a private street in the subdivision. Number nine, future stormwater detention retention area needs to be identified on each lot with a twenty-foot easement connected to the nearest public right-of-way. Number ten, the planning director shall be authorized to sign the preliminary plat and development plans with necessary changes made thereto and work shall not proceed until the preliminary plat has been so executed. Number eleven, no new construction permits will be issued and the sale of lots shall not occur until a final plat meeting the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section sixteen four forty-four has been approved by the planning director and filed for record with the Garland County Circuit Clerk and an original copy of the filed plat returned to the planning department office. Approval of this preliminary plat and development plan is valid until January thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. Within fifteen days prior to this date, the developer may request in writing an extension of preliminary plat and development plan approval of up to one year for project completion. Thirteen, provide detention plans and details. Number fourteen, provide a twenty-foot access easement from the detention pond, excuse me, to the nearest right-of-way. Number fifteen, pre and post drainage calculations must be provided. And number sixteen, the new eight-inch water main must be ductile iron pipe. Item number three is a request by John Rogers with B and F Engineering, representing property owner Kay Life Hot Springs, seeking Article Two Large-Scale Development Site Plan Approval to construct a new religious institute assembly facility except approximately one seventy-four aviation plaza and Zone C four. The recommendation on this project is for approval with seven conditions. Um, the finding is that the site plan meets the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section sixteen four twenty-two and sixteen four twenty-four. The conditions of approval are, number one, all construction and construction activity are to be accomplished in strict accordance with the approved site and development plans, as well as with all applicable approval conditions and with the minimum standards, codes, rules, and regulations and policies, as may now or hereafter, be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, the State of Arkansas, and/or the United States of America. This includes compliance with the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number two, separate permit applications shall be made by the applicant to Hot Springs Engineering Department and permits shall be in hand for stormwater, drainage, and sidewalks, as may be required prior to any work beginning. Number three, before building permits can be issued, the applicant shall provide pre and post drainage calculations and detention calculations to the engineering department. Before building permits can be issued, the development plan shall contain a call-out note for six-inch water main from the west as ductile iron pipe and B, documentation by Hot Springs Fire Department whether a fire protection system is required for the building type and square footage. Number five, a separate sign permit application, review, approval, and the permit shall be required prior to installation of any signs. Number six, all site lighting shall be fully downcast, fully shielded, designed and installed so that all artificial illumination is retained on site. And number seven, multiple building or large-scale plans approved by Planning Commission shall be effective for one year from the date of approval. Prior to its expiration date, the Director of Planning and Development may extend the original site plan approval for up to two one-year periods upon the applicant's written request. This approval shall be effective until January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And that completes the items on the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda and the three items contained herein.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As, excuse me, Madam Chairman, um, as, um, as action items, you may wish to have a record of a roll call vote?
Okay, yes, ma'am. Um, Mr. Starter, call the roll.
Stafford?
Approved.
Baker?
Yes.
Gerke?
Approved.
Greenway?
Approved.
Walker?
Approved.
Erickson?
Approved.
Hobby?
Approved, thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda is new business. There will be an opportunity for the applicant and for the public to provide testimony. Director Selman, would you introduce the next item, please?
Thank you. Uh, the next item is item number four, RZ twenty-one one sixty-four, regarding one oh four Gossit Place. This is a zone change request from R four Medium High Density Residential District to C three Office Neighborhood Commercial District for Block Two Lots One to Three in J. P. Millard's addition subdivision.
A motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion to approve and second does not mean that you are necessarily in favor of this particular application. May I have a motion to approve item four?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Planning Commissioners, please hold your questions until everyone has presented. Director Selman, would you please present staff report item number four?
Yes, thank you. Um, I do have a question, Madam Chairman, and that is whether the motion to approve was an approval with staff findings and recommendation.
Yes, I'll repeat that. Uh, may I have a motion for approval for item four on staff findings and recommendations?
So moved.
Second?
And second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the applicant is Ms. Andrea Akart, representing the property owner Fortune Park LLC. She's requesting zone change consideration from R four Medium High Density Residential to C three Office Neighborhood Commercial for property at one oh four Gossit Place. The property is currently zoned R four Medium High Density Residential, has a currently a future land use map designation of residential medium high and is located in Board of Directors District Number One. The, uh, finding is that the application complies with application submission requirements for zone change consideration per Hot Springs Code Section sixteen to eleven C. This application request was amended to include only lots one to three in Block Two instead of the original request for lots one to five. Lots four and five are to remain residentially zoned to provide a buffer to the developed single-family residences to the, to the north. The application convincingly addresses certain review criteria and findings of fact uh, found in Hot Springs Code Section sixteen to eleven E one. The application adequately demonstrates compatibility with surrounding zoning and development by providing a wooded buffer, and it responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use, or other conditions of recent development and proposed Malvern Avenue redevelopment within a mile of that. The subject's future land use plan map designation of chill medium high is not consistent with the requested C three Office Neighborhood Commercial zoning and a future land use designation for the requested C three Office Neighborhood would be commercial enclave. The recommendation that Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Directors approve and amend amending the zoning map from R four Medium High Density Regional to C three Office Neighborhood Commercial and amend a future land use plan map designation to commercial enclave for the subject property because the application meets the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section sixteen to eleven E. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. Will the applicant please come forward, state your name and address? And if there's anything you would like to add to the record? You have a maximum of five minutes to make your presentation.
Hi, I'm Andrea Akard, it's one hundred Cones Road in Hot Springs, Arkansas. I don't really have much to add besides what was presented. I think it borders commercial on two sides. We are leaving that buffer in the back where these homes are to stay residential so that only the commercial is the road front property. I think everything was presented. Unless there's questions?
Thank you. Do we have anybody signed up to speak on this? Particular item? Cynthia, I'm sorry, Laberan? Okay. In order for the time of the interest for people to speak, each person has a maximum of three minutes. Please state your name and address and your comments directed to the Commission and not to the audience.
My name is Cynthia Laberan. My address is one ten Gossip Place. I'm right next to that house there. So I just want to understand, she's going to leave some trees there where we could have some privacy or, or not? Or is she going to put a fence where we could have privacy or is she going to turn in everything to a parking lot or?
Would you?
Would you like to answer that question?
Yes, Mr., Mr. Starter, would you answer the?
How well you can see that screen there? Let me try to zoom in on that just a little bit. So, so they own lots one through five, all of these lots here. They originally wanted to rezone all five of those, but after discussions with them, it was decided it was probably due to topography and some other issues, just leaving a buffer, they were not going to seek rezoning on these two lots here. So this would be the property if approved, that would be rezoned C three, which basically kind of lines up with the parking lot across the street. So this is the only part of their property that would be able to be developed commercially.
Okay, one more question. The value of my house is not going to go down, is it, or is it going to stay the same?
I don't really.
It won't affect it?
At this time, I don't, we can't really answer that.
Okay, because that's one of my concerns, because I've been doing a lot to my house and I don't want it to go down.
Can you tell me which lot your residence is?
I think it's seven and eight.
Seven and eight?
Yes. So I've been doing a lot to my house.
So you're back here?
Yes, seven and eight and nine. We've been doing a lot to the house and our value went a lot up this last year. So I don't want it to go down. I just, I don't want it to get affected.
Well, I, I, I think we're all sympathetic to, to that, that concern, but we're probably not in a, a good position to answer your question directly as a Planning Commission.
Right, yeah, that is, that is correct. And we do, again, sympathize with your concerns, but they are allowing enough land for the, to buffer.
I just want to, you know, that's my most concern.
And the home there now is abandoned?
Yes, the one in the front, yes, it been abandoned for like two years already or so.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's my most concern, so how could I find out if it is going to affect me?
There really isn't any way to know that. The applicant is here and after the hearing, you might want to talk to her about what her specific plans are for that parking area. Does that require approval?
No.
Additional use? No, okay.
No building.
Okay. I'm sure she has a, a good idea of what it is she plans to do and is very aware of the need to maintain that buffer there.
Okay, well, if she could find out in the future, if it passes and everything, I would like to just, to get notified if it is going to affect me or not. Because if it is, then I'm against it.
Yes, thank you, we, we, we understand your concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Those who have signed up to speak have done so. The public hearing portion is now closed. Planning Commissioners, do we have anything to discuss on this, this project? And are you ready to take action? Michelle Baker, any concerns?
None.
Commissioner Greenway?
I, in my opinion, I think the applicant has provided enough buffer there that, that it should be, shouldn't impact it too much, but so I, I'm in favor of it.
Commissioner Erickson, any question?
I agree, and the fact that the topography is a little bit higher of an elevation is going to provide even a better pad. As far as the value, that would be a county assessment, property assessment question and with real estate market value. But I, I wouldn't see that it would affect it negatively, especially the large little spot that you have there in the back, that's nice and private.
I think the buffer's sufficient, too.
I agree with you. Mr. Starter?
I agree and approve of the request.
Motion to approve, is that on the floor already?
Yeah, I'm making sure Commissioner Walker had any questions at this point. I have a motion to approve item four with a staff report findings and recommendation. Mr. Starter, would you please call the roll?
Gurkey?
Approve.
Greenway?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Erickson?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Baker?
Approve.
Hobby?
Approve, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Director's Report.
Yes, I just want to say to the applicant that this is a recommendation from Planning Commission. The final decision will be made by the Board of Directors at their meeting in February, and do we have a date?
I don't have a calendar in front of me, I could tell you.
I believe it will be the second meeting in February.
Do you know what the first meeting date is?
It'll be the first Tuesday.
First Tuesday is the first, so the second Tuesday would be the fifteenth.
Okay, on February fifteenth, they will hold a hearing and again, we'll call for testimony at that time. So it will be on the fifteenth, on the fifteenth at six o'clock in this room. That would be a Tuesday night.
Okay, with no further business to discuss, we are ready to adjourn January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two Planning Commission meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
That was good.